Good evening, members of the Education, Children's Services Select Committee. Can you hear me okay? Thank you. We are now on a live stream meeting. If you could bear with me and I'll just run through the connection. And Amina, can you see and hear everybody okay? Amina?
Yes, I can.
Thanks, thank you. Melissa, are you okay?
Hi, hi Peter, yeah, fine thanks.
Thank you very much. councillor Barrington?
Yes, I can, thanks.
Thank you. Caitlin?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Woodhouse? Councillor Woodhouse, do we have connection? Cathy Griffiths? Who's Lisa Doob, is that right? Lisa Doob?
Yeah, here.
Who are you representing?
I'm a student, Applebell's Dear Academy.
Thank you very much. And Linni Henigan, we've got you, Linni?
Yep.
Thank you. Councillor Anderson?
I'm here.
Thank you. Jonathan Jones?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jonathan. Councillor Key?
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Councillor Lake?
Yes, yes, Peter, I can hear you, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, good.
Lisa Nolan?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you, Lisa. Councillor Makinson?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Thank you. Councillor Logan?
Yes, all good.
Thank you, Tom. Councillor McIntyre?
Yes, thank you, I can hear you fine, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Mina?
Yeah, I can see and hear.
Thank you. Jasmine?
Yes, I can see and hear.
You're a former Bell V D A representative, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much. Councillor Murray? Neil Lindsay?
Here.
Who are you representing?
Liverpool Fresh Cam's.
Sorry.
Liverpool Fresh Cam's, so I've been invited by Melissa and Lisa Nolan to support the presentation around children's mental health.
Thanks very much, thank you. Councillor Hurley?
Hello.
Thank you, Patrick. Steve Reddy?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. And Tracy Gore?
Yes, thank you, I'm here.
Thank you, we got the chair. I'll just hand you over to councillor Prince who will get this meeting of the Select Committee fully underway. Thanks colleagues, bye. Okay, thanks, thanks Peter. This is scheduled to be the last Education and Children's Services Select Committee of this cycle, but we never know what's going to happen on the election day, it will be changed. Obviously, if it is changed, there will be more, so welcome. Now, we've had apologies today from councillor Leon Tootman, councillor Harry Doyle, I presume that is still correct, and apologies from councillor, sorry, from Father Michael Fitzsimons. Are there any additional apologies to come in, please? No, we don't think so, okay. And we've got Lindsay Amelia being both Leon and Harry. Right, a virtual meetings protocol. I will ask the committee clerk to go through the ver- You've done that one? Okay, that's all it was, okay, right. Ask colleagues to mute microphones, please. Yes, if you can all mute your microphones apart from when you want to make a contribution, please. Right, now we're on to declarations of interest. Do you see any declarations of interest for members and officers, please? Are there any to come in? Members of the committee, there need to be a pecuniary or financial nature that you would need to lead the meeting due to the conflict of interests. Are there any such interests? Just thank you this morning, this evening? No, thank you. Okay, thank you. Just at the start, as they were ready, we order the business slightly because of company who've got childcare commitments and things like that, so bringing those people forward. We're going to start off with the minutes of the last meeting, which is between pages one and seven of our opening agenda. First of all, are they a correct record, please? Everybody who's, anybody, any inaccuracies on them?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Councillor Thompson, yes, please?
I was actually present after meeting.
Yeah, we've got that.
Although I'm noted as giving apologies. And then the other thing was, and this might just be me being a bit dense, item 21, we challenged reducing discharges from care, but I thought we wanted to increase safe and appropriate discharges from care, so I just questioned whether that was correct. I may have misunderstood.
Twenty-one.
Yeah, it's increased discharge, yeah.
Okay, so we're making that adjustment, okay? Got that, thank you. Okay, and we've taken your attendance, Helen, as well. Anything else of advice? For accuracy. So we're happy about accuracy, we move on to matters of advising. And then what we've got on our list here is, we need an update on the special educational needs disability and send report. And this is Steve who's going to give the spoilers, please. We've had two items, number twenty-two on the minutes. Over to Steve.
Yeah, Chair, just looking at the time and size of the agenda, done a written response to a councillor question on where we are up to on send, which I can circulate after the meeting today. For the next Select Committee, we intend to do a fuller update on send and the improvements were made since the inspection. And we're also going to be able to give you some feedback on, we've invited in Ofsted and CQC to do something called an interim visit, which they're going to be doing in February. So they can feed back on progress and any areas for improvement there. But if I circulate that note, it's got the detail of progress. I can send that round after the meeting.
That's fine, thank you very much, Steve. Any questions? See if there's anybody else on this? Can't see anybody? No, okay, that's great. So we're happy, do we need to mention the detail of the motion or not, Peter? No, no. No, okay, well, we're moving on in that case then. And what we're doing now is we're bringing Caitlin forward, who's going to do the Children and Care Council update for us, because she's got children to get home to, or come and see whatever. Caitlin, it's over to you, please.
Hi everyone, my name's Caitlin and I'm a member of the Children and Care Council. I know it's little, but hope everyone has a good Christmas and a new year. This year has been a very, has been very different and difficult for a lot of people, but not for our care leavers, which are sixteen to eighteen year olds living independently. Our Christmas, in fact, this year, although there was a global pandemic on our young people, actually benefited from it as everyone who donated was so generous. Our care leavers received a handwritten card from CICC and a fuel voucher or an energy voucher. They also received Asda vouchers and a gift bag that included lots of gifts, for example, device, lovely gift sets, some care leavers got perfume, gloves, PJs and some other little goodies. The gift bags were received from the CICC every year for Christmas. It means so much to everyone who receives them as, like, it's the only thing they could get on Christmas, on a Christmas morning. So I'd like to say a big thank you to the Mayor's Funds for the fuel and energy vouchers, Malap from the School Improvement and Susane Metcalf, who donated Asda vouchers, everyone from the council and the public who donated to our Amazon wishlist, Cathy Veed, a P A for Leaving Care, whose family donated the gift bags, Lisa Chamberlain, who's a P A for Leaving Care, who organised and delivered pyjamas kindly donated by the drama party in Liverpool. Out of all this, we were also able to give families more 1,600 worth of Asda vouchers and also £200 to Leaving Care for emergency services over Christmas. And for all the things that we've been working on are key priorities for Linni Henigan. Linni Henigan asked us to come up with key priorities for her to focus on as she is the newly elected member for the Children's Services. A lot of children and young people have engaged in the Children and Care Council to give their views. We are meeting up with Linni Henigan, Steve Reddy and Fiona Waddington in mid-February to share with her our views. Example, young people come up with where ensuring every child has fresh school uniform each year, setting up bike project to engage with USAC, young people, as we found engaging with them over Zoom during the pandemic has been difficult due to them knowing, like, not knowing anything about our team. We are also working alongside the USAC teams to improve this, working with young advisors around the crime prevention strategy for Liverpool. Just wanted to say a big massive thank you for all the laptops and bongos provided by the virtual school as this has been essential to our education going forward. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
John, you're on mute.
Peter, yeah, that's what I was going to say, I think you're on mute, Chair.
Right, I will start again. I was just saying, thank you Caitlin. We had a very similar report last, a similar and positive report last night at the Corporate Parenting Meeting. And I just think it's really good that, you know, we have managed to find ways through the middle funding and so on to give you some sort of Christmas and, you know, we're continuing to provide the support that we need and you're finding ways to get your voice heard as well. So that's all we've been promising and thank you very much for that update for us. Thanks Caitlin. Now doing your, to the Corporate Parenting Minutes themselves? Please try. Okay, so that's, we're going back now to item number three, to the actual Corporate Parenting Meeting. From the last one, on the eighth of December, or ninth of December, whatever. There'd be an additional comment from Linni at the end as well, what you got for last night. Thank you. So who's doing this one? Councillor Henigan? Councillor Henigan. Linni, over to you, please.
Sorry, you threw me there, Peter. I was ready for my report but not the one on the last Corporate Parenting Board, so you'll have to bear with me a second. I mean, just, just sort of thing here, this, if people just look at my priorities, one of my priorities is around, you know, how we promote the work of the Corporate Parenting Board, because certainly I've been a councillor for four years and until I attended that first Corporate Parenting Board, I really wasn't sure what my responsibility was. And I do believe that across the council, elected members get elected, they go on to whatever committees they're on, and they're not really sure of all responsibilities because I honestly wasn't my working children's services in my day job. So I think that was really, really important. I really enjoyed the Corporate Parenting Board and we had one last night. But I think what they've done is, we've looked at how we can put things together. So like last night's one was around health and wellbeing and the next one will be around, you know, our care offer and what have we got for our care leavers. So I think it's massively important that people, councillors and our officers and people in the council understand all responsibilities of Corporate Parenting for our looked after children. So what are we actually, it's okay to say that we are, but what are we actually doing to provide better opportunities for our looked after children, better job opportunities, better access to, you know, if we can't find them jobs and things, why aren't we creating them ourselves within the council? It's really, really important that, you know, we say what we're doing on the tin type thing for me. So I don't know, let me just focus on these because I was wrong.
Linni, I was just going to say, we had quite a detailed update on the virtual school from Cowan and Lawler, didn't we? That was the main theme of the last meeting, which I think there's some really positive stuff there, but as ever, there's still, there's still work to do.
I don't know if that's enough, John. I think the stuff around the virtual schools presentation was fantastic. And I think one of the things that did come out of it for me, and I said, you know, we need to get it right in terms of what we're saying is that the attainment level of our care leavers has risen for the last couple of years in terms of how the, you know, the qualifications and stuff. It's a very, very interesting presentation.
Okay, am I, thanks behind you? Okay, right, thanks, thanks, Linni. I think that made the last one, very much similar to the made for the Cowan Members as well. And everything has moved on so much. I agree, I thought the meeting there last night for Corporate Parenting was absolutely superb. We have so much time that we can devote to all that side of things that we haven't really got because there's so many different wide ranging items of business on the core education agenda. But that meeting enables people to have their say. We get an entire team talking to us and I think it's all positive. And the result from that is that, as you say, there are improvements in all sorts of things. There's still a gap, of course, but we are narrowing the gap in the attainment and so on, which is going to be our aim. So if you'd like to say anything more, what did you guys on last night's meeting as well, Linni, or Steve?
Last night was around, and then Melissa's going to talk on the agenda, around the mental health. But it was around, you know, our relationship with the CCG and what they do and what, you know, we look at the whole health of the child, not just, you know, the emotional health, the whole lot in terms of, you know, the assessments, dentists, everything else, what are we doing? And even them figures in terms of assessment, they've really improved. She gave some really good stuff in the last three years how we are meeting them targets and improving in making sure that our looked after children are getting them assessments on time. So it was really, really good thing. I think it's good for everybody on the council to actually, if you can get access to them presentations, it'd be really interesting for everyone to see where we are going with it.
Yeah. Again, I agree. No, really, speak, every councillor should try and attend at least one of them because it's so informative and we also all have the individual responsibility to be Corporate Parenting, parent us ourselves, which is why that committee is there. So I hope that was really good. Thanks, Linni. Any comments on our particular items from anybody? Improvements. Are we happy to approve those minutes of the December meeting? Are we happy with that? Yes, we're happy with that, thanks. Thank you, everybody. Now we're on to Children's Care. We're moving on forward now, aren't we, Richard? Item nine. We're moving item nine forward for, again, to enable Melissa to do other things as well. She can tell us all about this. The presentation on mental health and the impact of COVID-19 on children, young people and families has paid us 27.36 of our supplementary agenda. Thank you, Melissa. You can start for us, please.
Thank you, thanks, Chair. I've actually just pulled out some points in the presentation, if that's okay, to share. And I just want to welcome Lisa Nolan's Programme Manager for Children and Young People Mental Health from Liverpool CCG, who's joined us this evening to support this presentation. And Lindsay Neal, Clinical Lead for Liverpool Fresh Cam's from Old Hay. So thank you both for joining today. So yes, and thank you for inviting us along. This is an update and I understand that there was one last year where we were discussing mental health and wellbeing. And so the focus of this presentation is going to be about what's happened over the last 12 months and the impact that's had on children and young people and what we know. But I guess it's essential in the first instance for us just to reflect back to what we actually do categorically know. And this life course is model, this is a diagram basically showing all of the usual indicators that we would use to assess mental health and wellbeing and risk factors for mental health and wellbeing across the entire life course. And the top left hand side is the perinatal early years and then it snakes all the way around until the end of life. And what you can see on this is that for Liverpool, in perinatal and early years, it tends to be relatively positive relative to the national averages at which it's being compared. However, the numbers underpinning that are really high. And so we're still talking about a lot of families that are struggling underneath that and the statistical significance masks that somewhat. But then when we reach childhood and adolescence, what we see is it becomes notably more red, which in effect in this diagram means it's worse or our rates are higher, significantly higher than elsewhere. And that trend consistently continues across the life course. Effective, apologies, Chair. Apologies, Chair, for that distraction. And the reason for this is we know that there are many factors that will be happening in and around a person's life in Liverpool and that will create a cumulative effect and that cumulative effect will cascade and carry on throughout the life course, causing poorer outcomes. We commonly talk about the most extreme of these experiences as adverse childhood experiences. And this is a common phrase that many of us will be aware of. And what we're talking about here are traumatic events that can happen during a person's childhood and early years that has a negative effect and has a long lasting effect on their health and wellbeing. These are generally categorized in the three groups that are shown on this slide in terms of abuse and neglect and household challenge. And looking at population studies, what we've seen is that the more of these experiences that you have, the worse your outcomes generally are in life across the population. So obviously, that isn't about the individual, that's just generally what we see about the, across the population. And the threshold within which studies have shown is that anything four or more tends to have multiplicative worse outcomes. So at the top right hand side of the slide, it shows that actually not only does it manifest in terms of mental health, 4.5 times more likely to experience depression, but actually it starts to manifest into risk taking behaviours and physical poorer health outcomes. This was a situation prior to COVID in Liverpool. And I think we are probably all aware that the situation with COVID and related policies, which have been necessary, have actually been quite damaging to children and young people. The challenge we face is that many of our indicators shown on that initial snake diagram are not reliable for us to be able to assess at the moment because they're often routine data brought in by services that just aren't operational at the moment or aren't operating in a way that would give us reliable information. So what we're relying on quite a lot is hearing from the communities that we're working with and using cross sectional surveys effectively to tell us what's happening and to give us a snapshot in time. And this information I'm going to share now gives us some highlights, which has been consistently found across a lot of different evidence spaces and is provided by CUS, who are a mental health service provider for children and young people. I won't go through it all because I will share the slides for people to look at, but it's effectively what we're seeing is children, there's a rapid increase in the proportion of children who are struggling to sleep during lockdown. Eating difficulties are increasing and that's not just for people who have had, who already diagnosed as an eating disorder, but generally the relationship between food has become more complicated. Anxiety has escalated in children and young people and that's gone up by 146%. That's reflected in the entire population and we're seeing that people generally are more anxious about health, their health and leaving the house and many other factors. We know that children are being exposed within their homes to more extreme and damaging issues such as domestic violence. And we know that we're seeing children feeling lonely and more depressed during this period. But it's not consistent across the life course in terms of those figures, they are broad. And what we're seeing across the life course is that actually we're seeing differences as to why these poorer outcomes are happening. The first thousand and one years of life is a critical period in life and it's essential for building, it's essential for our brain to build neurological pathways and able for us to be able to be resilient and to cope with, mentally to be able to cope with issues later on in life. They're effectively, it's effectively when we create our building blocks for later in life. What we know is that what's critical in this point is mental health and wellbeing of parents or those that are providing the nurturing during this period. Surveys that have looked at how people are coping during this part of the life stage have shown that effectively the biggest concern across every single household income bracket is about the emotional, mental health and wellbeing of the parent. That is socially patterned, so each one of those strips represents an income bracket and the lighter blue is the lowest income. So you can see that the issues, that feeling is much higher within the lowest income households, but actually it's consistently the highest across all of them. I also want to point out on this graph that actually some of the issues that are not people in our lowest income households are facing at this critical stage are related to financial worries, so subsistence issues basically. Financial worries, which is a bit further in, and also being able to get food and supplies. And effectively, when people are struggling with these basic matters of life, the ability to be able to bond and connect with your child is stressed. And these are called poverty stresses and we know that this is a key driving factor for poor mental health, not only for the parent but for the child as well. Moving on to later in the child's development, we know that there are four key domains for a child's development as shown on this diagram and they are all critical in terms of mental health and wellbeing. Although the diagram does show and depict that social, emotional is directly identified as being linked to mental health and wellbeing. I'm sure we can all appreciate that actually underdevelopment in any of these areas will lead indirectly to poorer mental health and wellbeing outcomes for a child. These are the elements that are assessed as part of the early years foundation stage. So when we're looking to school readiness, they are critical for us to get it right at that point, this early years stage. And early intervention, we know, can make a radical difference to whether a child achieves or not. Pre-COVID, what we know about levels of school readiness is that we had seen, we'd seen a slight decline after a period of improvements, a decline of 1.2% in Liverpool, which had increased the gap unfortunately between us and national by 6.9%. And I suppose if we just reflect on some of the challenges that we faced as a result of COVID and schools shutting and support services for some of our families that might be struggling the most, we can reflect on actually what the impact of COVID might be on this particular, this indicator, which we know is a good measure for a child's future success. The next slide is showing us the pattern of service uptake and contacts for our children and young people mental health services. And what we can see from here is that there was, it was a fluctuation during the period of the COVID period, which has then increased towards the end of last year. And I'm sure Lisa will be able to give us a bit more detail on that as we go along. We know for older children, the issues related to schools and colleges has been a particular matter and I think that this has been mentioned previously. A lot of the anxieties relate to a feeling of hopelessness, concerns about their future, you know, efforts of attainment and that in itself presents a feeling of a lack of control in a person's life. And so it's very easy, I'm sure, for us all to relate to, but this has increased exponentially as a result of COVID for this particular group. I'm just going to hand over to Lisa to talk us through the whole school approach, if that's okay, Chair.
Hi, everyone. Just before I go on to this slide, just to add some further information really regarding to what's happening locally on the ground with regards to our commissioned services. So Melissa's talked about the contacts doubling and they have. Referrals did dip in April and May, but they've steadily increased again over the course of the year. Waits have, about 70% of children and young people are seen within 18 weeks, but due to some of the challenges now on the ground around workforce and the increased complexity of cases that are coming through door. complexity of cases that are coming through door, that that is having an impact on waits at the moment as well. If you do, if you do present in crisis, you will be seen within twenty four hours. And we do have now a twenty four seven crisis team, which is a new service that's been commissioned this year as a result of Covid. Other services that have been commissioned as a result of Covid include the CUTH service below the age range to age ten. And all services are offered in that virtual and face to face blended approach at the moment. And the presentations, I think Melissa's already sort of alluded to this, are becoming more complex. Main presentations to young people with anxiety, isolation, education disruption, self harm and suicidal thoughts. There's been a big increase in demand for parental support. Again, those presenting themes are around educational disruption, financial issues, children and people with developmental conditions in access and assessments and diagnosis. And again, the the anxiety too. The challenges really have been around the complexities, the workforce. We have noticed an increase in DNAs as well, and we did notice an increase in children and people not attending appointments, whether that's virtually or face to face. That has reduced, but it's still higher than last year. School closures have obviously played a big impact, not only for children and people, parents and carers, but also the workforce, delivering services as well. And obviously all the wide social determinants and and areas that Melissa alluded to with regards to slides around adverse childhood experiences as well. Just with regards to some information on vulnerable groups as well, CUTH have been really successful in reaching out to the BAME community, seeing at least forty fourteen percent of those fourteen percent of those accessing CUTH are from the BAME community as compared to seven percent that we usually see accessing the the other children and people mental health providers. There's also been a fifty percent increase in children and young people from LGBTQ communities accessing CUTH as well. It just shows that that service does reach out to some communities that the traditional way of working has. Just to go on to the whole school approach as well, obviously we've had a lot of disruption with regards to school closures, open, closed, open, closed during the year, which which is a place that has significant impact on children's mental health and parental and mental health as well. And there's a lot of services continuing to be offered. The two slides that you can see in the presentation are really with regards to the model around the whole school approach, which looks which has been developed across the different levels of need that we use in Liverpool. So there's a lot of resources that have been developed for school staff, for children and young people and families around that early intervention stage, that prevention stage. And then there are a number of services that have been commissioned to support schools, children and people and families at the early intervention and the higher intervention stage as well, mainly centred around the mental health support teams, which are located in the in the white pass hubs. The interventions also stem staff wellbeing as well, so there's been some support around staff wellbeing as well. And there's been a lot of training and awareness raising that's happened. And that's been adapted to offer a more bite sized approach now, which has been really successful in take up as well. And then we're looking to see how we can link to the education improvement plan as well, as that has a mental a priority within mental health, within mental health as well. So I think that's all from me. Melissa, you?
That's great, thank you. And just so, I guess it's important for us to reflect about the fact that quite often some of the drivers for poor child mental health sit in the context of their environment. And families are obviously very critical to positive mental health and wellbeing. What we've seen as a result of Covid are more more prevalent issues relating to family relationships being strained under the pressure of lockdown and other pressures that we're seeing related to income and and work, et cetera, during the Covid period. We've also seen an increase in suicidal thoughts being reported. Although it's it's very early at the moment, it it looks, you know, there is the potential that we could see an overall increase in the number of deaths by suicide. Trauma has been something that has increased during this period within for adults and obviously for the child with the adults, that has a cascading effect. And we know that self worth is something that has it's been described by this CUTH service, something that has increased, however, it's starting from a really low point. And that hasn't always been reflected consistently in other studies either. And one of the one of the major issues that we've found with children and young people relates to the relationships in the household, obviously that can have quite a dynamic impact on a child with relationships being strained in the household quite because, you know, if nothing else, a child will have nowhere else to go. They're limited in their ability to be able to cope with it, et cetera. And so it's it's been a particular strain within this group. So some of the things that we've, Lisa's already spoke about, we're already doing. But I guess if we're looking at it principally, the things that we're already doing are assessing and understanding the impact of Covid. And this is happening on an ongoing basis. We are starting off in May with a questionnaire that will be assessing the impact of our mental health and wellbeing for our our young people through our school channels. And this is to complement existing activities that are looking to reflect and to feed back into services so they can adapt and evolve in order to meet the needs of our populations. And what we do know in terms of being able to meet the needs of these populations, it's quite critical for us to understand from their perspective, their lived experience of Covid. And we need to continue to develop and enhance our existing services to meet new and unmet needs. Lisa's already described some of the children's services and how they've adapted and evolved. In addition to that, public health has stepped up some services. We are also offering the CUTH service for adults over the age of twenty six. And we targeted this also to teachers in order to provide support. And we've also targeted it to parents through schools so we can look to provide support wrapped around the children. We've also added in a new model of delivery for the Samaritans, a callback service which has been bespoke for Liverpool. Again, that's been targeted at teachers and and they also as an added element to that are training up our contact services that may not be specifically related to mental health, but maybe contacting people or people may be in contact with them about other matters such as financial issues. So they can highlight and understand somebody who might be presenting with mental health or wellbeing challenges. Obviously, we've we've already heard about the whole school approach and we are we will continue to look to establish and build new services and as as we go along. I guess the last part of it that we need to think about really a lot more and it's a great opportunity for us to share this today and to hear your thoughts on it, is that the community engagement aspect. It's critical for us to move through Covid is the community engagement aspect, but also for us in terms of our recovery is going to be led by how our communities see themselves moving forward and it's going to be critical. We have a lot of, we've got a lot of work happening with community engagement and we're coordinating at the moment. A lot of it is linking into our mental health and wellbeing services and trying to trying to tackle some of those subsistence issues that we know are currently a problem for our our families and communities. I also wanted to add on to this, that a citywide approach is being taken to mental health and wellbeing. And we, you know, we as a system recognised that actually we needed greater accountability for mental health and wellbeing in the system. And we we have set these priorities alongside that strategy. And it's it's going to be pinnacle for us. And that's a collaborative approach, working with partners across the city in order to make sure that we continue to make good progress against our work for mental health and wellbeing. Finally, as part of the presentation, I just wanted to highlight where where members might be able to get more information if they want to around the services that have been mentioned here today. And there's also some further information about what we're doing in terms of Child Mental Health Week, which is the first of seventh of February. Happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Very thought, very interesting. Obviously, families that have major problems in normal circumstances have got even greater problems because there's so many additional factors like financial pressure and so on. And there's people in domestic violence situations, there's no obvious, you know, they're more contained, so obviously those situations will get worse as well. So these things are up to be additional consequence to Covid. You've got the actual illness and trying to sort out, getting those rates down and so on. Then you've also got the obvious normal impact on less treatment for cancer patients and so on and so forth. But you've highlighted the the situation with regards to mental health there as well. And that's, you know, really important because some of those day to day services obviously have been cut back with staff shortage and so on and so forth. So I think you're doing a great job to cover, in effect, cover for those reduced services. A couple of us actually went to a tour on the ACE situation, the adverse childhood experiences. And it was very interesting. It also links in with what you were saying about the first couple of years of a child's life being so important, because obviously mum, mum and dad would ever go into a situation with massive problems themselves. This Covid situation is going to make them that so much worse. So it's really important, you know, we we understand that the more difficult experiences children have to go through, the more, yeah, the more damaging it will be in a sense. So that was that was my view of it anyway. Anyone got any questions for you? Any questions? Lindsay, go on.
Sorry, I was still on mute then. Yeah, so it was a really good report and you said that there's like one hundred and sixty four percent increase in health anxiety. Is that any different on children that already have like an existing mental health disability? So like say, for example, if they've already got anxiety, they've already got depression or autism, is it impacting on them any differently to children who are just now worried because of the because of obviously because of Covid?
Yeah, so a lot of the studies have shown that actually that those factors were the factors described in the report were disproportionately seen in children that had an existing mental health diagnosis. But I wonder if Lindsay, our colleague from Old Hey, might want to comment on what she's actually seeing?
Absolutely, yeah, I think I'd agree with you, Melissa. That is what is what we've seen, particularly with children with neurodevelopmental difficulties. Yeah.
It's certainly what I've heard from people who I know who've got children or family members who've either got anxiety or autism, like it's been very complicated for them because on the one hand, the struggle of when they're at home and then the struggle of when they're going back into the school because they're scared about Covid. And it is heartbreaking because of they've been saying as well, at the same time, it's not just, it's not just the anxiety or the worry, it's making them sick. It's causing all the physical symptoms as well. It's causing like, it's causing like bowel symptoms, it's causing like migraines, vomiting, stuff like that as well.
You're absolutely right. And I think the normal, how we approach that is encourage the child to test out things in the community and try and challenge that belief that they're that they're at risk of, you know, germs and all those sorts of things, but we we can't do those things. So it's a really complicated picture, yeah.
Because they're going, boy, it is unsafe.
Exactly.
And then at the same time, and I noticed as well that it was, I think it was mentioned about a fifty percent increase in LGBT plus children using CUTH. Do you have any other information or data on LGBT plus mental health? Because I know that, I know from comic shoes, they've said that they've seen like a huge influx and like, obviously because they deal with LGBT plus children, they've been having like a huge influx in referrals. And I know that obviously at the same time, when they're in lockdowns or they're stuck at home, they might be struggling, like if you've got unsupportive family and then that isolates it from the usual support networks. And how can we ensure that we're focusing on like getting enough mental health support for them?
Yeah, no, I think that's a really good point. I don't know if, I think it might have been Lisa that mentioned the proportion, but I guess that that targeted support is really critical, isn't it really? And what we found sometimes is that the virtual services work well for for some communities. But then sometimes it's subject to whether you've actually got the privacy and the ability to be able to access these services within your home. So, you know, unfortunately, it feels like it's, you know, there are certain measures and interventions we can put in to support people and and then it's, you know, wrapping those around them best we can. I don't know, Lisa, if you have any more information on that particular group?
No, just that, you know, just to, you know, repeat what you've just said and and also agree with what you've just said, Lindsay, with regards to the enhanced anxieties that that have been shown, you know, within those different communities and different groups of children and young people. And and with regards to what Melissa said as well about the virtual delivery not being accessible to everybody has sort of, you know, resulted in some of our services offering that blended approach now as well. So some of the white pass hubs have opened. And, you know, it they're all Covid safe and they're all risk assessed around that, but they have opened so that they can, so that young children and people can can access them. And they will work with children, young people and families with regards to whether they they need to be seen in a face to face rather than virtually.
Thank you. Can we have your question, your comment please, Steve?
Thanks, Chair. I guess just a couple of quick points. I think just to reiterate that point about the demand pre-Covid for mental health support for young people and and some of the concerns, I think we've expressed in this committee before as well, and also that came out through the work we continue to do speaking to young people about Child Friendly City. When asked to prioritise things, you know, to make the city more child friendly and better for their future, they talk about health and wellbeing, but particularly particularly mental health. And I think, you know, as a city, as a system, as a local authority in NHS, I think we've got to review how we prioritise some of our resources to meet to meet that demand. And my separate point was we've got Child Mental Health Awareness Week coming up, the first to the seventh of Feb. And I think it'd be really great if the resources that are available around that and the information on it could be circulated to to all the committees so you, as members of the committee, can also share that with your groups and everyone you link with. Thanks, Chair.
Thanks, Steve. We'll finish off this one with Claire. Claire Mackenzie, it's your turn, please.
Thank you, Melissa, that was good. I mean, yeah, I really enjoyed that. I just wanted to say that obviously, you know, some of this stuff about mental health, hopefully it will resolve when children do get back to school and get a bit of space away from their parents and out of that like pressure cooker environment that everyone's in and we're all feeling it. But like obviously we've got a lot of work to do, I think, supporting the schools and the staff and the children do get back because, you know, a lot of focus is going to education and missing education, but actually a lot of their work, I think, is going to be just getting back to some sort of, I can even kill almost, and almost like the education part of it is going to be back end, I think, to a lot of other things that are going on. So, you know, thank you very much for that. It's a lot of food to throw, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Claire. Thanks for all, there's a whole team involved, Melissa and Lisa and Lindsay and anybody else I've forgotten for you for that excellent contribution, which I think has taught us a great deal. Thanks also for the questions, Lindsey, et cetera as well. So thank you for that one. And you can now go back to what you planned for tonight. And now on to item number ten, is this correct? Peter just kept you with it? We'll have a take Cathy next on ten. Tracy Gorn next. Okay, on Tracy, which is item number five, the Racing Quality Task Force update. Receiving a presentation from Tracy Gorn, Chair, the Racing Quality Task Force to provide an update on the work undertaken to date. And also we have the contributions from two young women from Belvedere Academy, a computing of ex pupil, to outline positive actions that the school have undertaken with the student voice being in the centre of the change. Now, before we start this one, this one, Tracy, this is something I particularly wanted to have on this agenda. Well, it will be certainly my lectures in May will be the last one of the cycle. We didn't want to leave, this is so important, it's important that we're going to be pulled back. I also need to say, I don't want any questions on on the bell. I also need to say I don't want any questions on the Belvedere Girls because that's been taken up a lot of difference to items as well. So we can talk about Tracy and her race equality updates. Over to you, Tracy.
Sorry. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, thank you for inviting myself and also Jasmine and Lisa to present today. If I just start off early and giving you an update of, you know, what we've done and where we're up to currently. So you will all be aware that the secondment started in September 2020. I was first tasked to recruit the task force members, which has been done. We've recruited 11 members. We agreed our terms of reference. We also agreed our operating model and have agreed our priority themes, and they are education, employment skills and economy, health and wellbeing, crime and criminal justice and culture. Just give a bit of information, sorry, on our operating model. The things that we were looking at and what we'd agreed is that we'd obviously sourced data and the various subjects that we're looking at, that we were told to say is a dialogue sessions. And within these dialogue sessions, we're done by community organisations, practitioners, individuals, really, invited to highlight issues and discuss those issues and solutions and really enable an open and transparent engagement with the work of the task force. We would consider all of the data and the information that would come out of the dialogue sessions and then held formal evidence sessions. And the formal evidence sessions would be the task force meeting with leading organisations, you know, senior leadership and challenge them really on all the issues and the information that we've received. Yeah, and challenge them to what they're doing, what needs to be done. We also agreed that we would engage young people and that we'd have a goal-based recommendations that would come out of the work that we've done. In terms of engagement, I've held actually in August before I started a community Zoom and that was literally just me going through my address book and inviting lots of organisations and individuals just to say, hey, I'm here, particularly after the media that occurred in the summer around John. I've also gave a presentation to the People Power Partnership. I've met with a host of cultural organisations. I've met with universities. I did a presentation to the University of Liverpool Senior Leadership Team. It's over 140 people. I've spoken to Vice-Canister John Moores, University. I've also met with the business sector, Bill Addy and Chris McPalen from Liverpool Bid Company, Paul Chappell from Chamber of Commerce. I've given a presentation to Local Solutions Board, I was invited to do so. I've met with Merseyside Police, a number of variety of sessions, really, community meetings, but also with the senior leadership. I attend the City Council Equality Task Group, that's chaired by Liz Parsons. And I also have keeping in touch meetings with Mayor Anna Rotherby in her capacity as Mayor of Equality Equities. And I've also been working very closely with Lorna Rogers from the Combined Authority. Lorna is actually a member of the Race Equality Task Force. And it's rising proper actually that we work quite collaboratively in the areas of work that we, you know, we're both looking at. And via Lorna, I've been invited to sit on the Local Authority Race Equality Officers Meeting. That's all the boroughs that come together. Going back to education then, in terms of the dialogue sessions, we've held a series of dialogue sessions ranging from early years and key stage one and two, key stage three and five, further and higher education. We held a specific dialogue with Black and racial minority staff, that staff attended from both, well, all schools, colleges and universities. All of those sessions were recorded, they were all held via Zoom and they've all been transcribed. In terms of the numbers attending these dialogue sessions, we had, you know, between 30 and 40 people that would attend a dialogue session. And each dialogue session would then be broken down into workshops, facilitated workshops. So we could have three or four sessions in one go. And everyone would be given the same questions. It's just that we enabled the workshop to be smaller groups so that people could really get into the issues and have really good quality discussion and debate. In respect of education, I've also met with the Cabinet Member for Education. I've met with the Cabinet Member for Children's Services, but recognise that Councillor Barry Kushner has now moved portfolios. I've met with the Chair of the Select Committee, the Director of Education and Children's Services. I'm not going to go over. There's a list of, you know, people and organisations that have been meeting on a one-on-one in respect of education. The dialogue discussion then and themes that have come out have been, and these are the headline themes around representation, dealing with racist behaviour, stereotypes and impacting, and how they impact on disciplinary and actions and exclusions, admissions, attainment, ESOL training, special educational needs and refugees and asylum seekers, and particularly around access to education. We've also held formal evidence sessions. We've started off with the strategic sessions. We've met with Cabinet Member and so these are very much, much more formal. So we met with the Cabinet Member and Chair of Select Committee. We've met with both the Director of Education, Children's Services and also the CEO of the Liverpool Labour Partnership. We met with the Chair of Governors Forum and also another governor. We had a session with special educational needs, further education, higher education. We gathered in sessions with early years in December, key stage one and two and key stage three and five. Key stage one and two and key stage three and five were held, although the attendance was low. So we, and the early years one ended up being cancelled due to people not being able to meet the dates. So we rearranged all of those, those three for, you know, the beginning of January, I think it was the 6th and the 7th of January. And you will all know of what occurred over the Christmas and the, you know, schools going back for the one day and then having to quickly sort out learning from home. So those sessions that we held in January, again, the attendance was low. We did have some people attend, but attendance was low. And what we agreed was to, in order that we do get the information, is that we, everybody got the questions in advance of these sessions. And we asked that people provide us with written submissions. And we also have produced a survey that will be going out to schools. We delayed sending out to schools on the advice of, you know, the education colleagues, really because we're well aware that the difficulties and that, you know, head teachers and schools are dealing so much at the moment. But our survey will go out, I think it will be early next week. And we will give time for those surveys to be returned and for the information to be returned. Terms of community engagement, we've, you know, done a number of engagement sessions. So we've had that community organisation, I participated in panel discussions, both local and national, we've held a series of radio interviews, we've met with the teaching unions that was organised by the TUC. We've met with Students Guild. We're in, we've worked with LCVS, who have actually put a call house has gone out now on Monday. And we're asking for community and voluntary sector to work for and with the Equality Task Force on the work and the findings that we've got from education. So what we are in the process of doing is saying, and what we're asking our wider community members is, here's our initial findings, here's what our, you know, headline recommendations are going to be. Does this ring true to you? So we're testing back out what we've heard back out with wider community. We've also developed a website and it's just been delayed to get launched. I understand it will get launched now by the end of next week. And I'll just finish really in terms of the timeframe, and this has been amended. Our initial timeframe was that our dialogue and evidence and sessions and engagements would have been completed by end of January, with us producing the reports in February. And that timeline is now gone because of, you know, the difficulties that we've had in completing our work. So the Race Equality Task Force met last night and we've agreed to to release the reports on education and push that back to April. I've also given here the timeframe for the other areas, so employment skills, economy, health and wellbeing and crime, criminal justice and culture. It was our intention to go through each priority area and then release the reports. Now, because of the delays, what we don't want to do is delay the start of the employment skills because the whole timetable will slip. So that we're going to run too. So we're still going to start employment skills in February, but we will finalise and complete the work on education. So that's just really a timeline. You've got another presentation from Jasmine and Lisa. Jasmine's an ex-pupil of Belvedere and Lisa is current pupil. And I know that, you know, we all know that Belvedere School was in the headlines for race inequalities in the past. And what we asked was actually for representatives both from Belvedere School, the head teacher, but also the group that they'd set up to give a presentation to the task force, which they did. And we found it really a fabulous presentation in terms of the information and what work was going on. And so we thought it would be really good for the Select Committee to also hear the work. So that is my presentation for now and I'm happy to take any questions.
Right. Thanks, Tracy. Do you think it's a good idea, Peter, to go straight to the Belvedere Girls? And then we'll come, well, we're not taking any questions at all on the Belvedere Girl story. We will come back to you, Tracy, for some questions. Would that be okay? Does that make sense?
Tracy, take the presentation now.
So Tracy takes your presentation down. We go on to the Belvedere Girls. Thank you.
Sorry. Is that called now?
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's Lisa and what was the lady? It's Jasmine. Lisa and Jasmine. They both have a hose.
Hello, everyone. Sorry about that. Just a few technical difficulties. So thank you, everyone, for your time today. My name is Jasmine Mooney. I'm 20 years old and I'm a final year law student studying Sheffield. I attended the Belvedere Academy from 2011 and left as head girl in 2018. So we're appreciative of the opportunity today to offer a student perspective, especially in the current climate around the Black Lives Matter movement. So through this presentation, we will highlight barriers to education from a citywide perspective. I'll also touch on my experience at Belvedere and my continued involvement as an alumni. I'll now hand over to Lisa Doob.
Thank you and hello, everyone. My name is Lisa Doob. I'm currently a year 13 student at the Belvedere Academy. And I'll be presenting on the context of what happened at Belvedere and my involvement within the pupil-led equality and diversity team at the school.
So education and ethnicity. There's a recognizable attainment gap when considering children of ethnic minorities throughout the English education system. Progress eight measures how much progress students make between 11 and 16 years compared with other students with similar starting points. The figure on the right-hand side of the screen is provided for by the Office for National Statistics. It's part of the February 2020 report entitled 'Child Poverty and Education Occums by Ethnicity'. So nationally, we can see illustrated by the vertical line on the graph that the average progress eight scores for all ethnic groups during the academic year 2018 to 19 was negative 0.03. Compared to locally, Liverpool's average progress eight score was lower at negative 0.32 and Nosey's was negative 0.82. So to quote from the Office for National Statistics, Noisy had average progress eight scores of negative 0.7, negative 0.82 and negative 0.9 for mixed white and black pupils respectively. This made it the local authority with the lowest progress eight scores for these ethnic groups. So to take a closer look at statistics facing children from a Black ethnic background, pupils from a Black Caribbean background has an average progress eight score of negative 0.31. Mixed white and black Caribbean is negative 0.38, whilst Black African is positive 0.33. So to contextualise this information, we must consider education and deprivation. So that was looking at ethnicity. Now let's look at by area. I've highlighted on the left-hand side table the areas with the worst progress eight scores within the Liverpool area. According to the website Liverpool City Council's latest figures. I then looked at the latest deprivation statistics and cross-referenced the wards. So unsurprisingly, all 10 of the wards highlighted and the 10% of the most deprived areas were also the wards with the lowest progress eight scores, showing a direct correlation between poverty and education. It's important also to note, based on the report, that Black and mixed ethnic groups were the most likely to have gross household income of less than £400 per week. Analysis shows that one-third of children in black households lived in low income and 22% of children in black households lived in low income and material deprivation. So why is this important? Young adults who suffer financial hardships as children have significantly greater than average chances of earning low wages, being unemployed, spending time in prison or becoming a lone parent. So those socio-economic factors will negatively impact these children throughout their life. There's a clear pathway from childhood poverty to reduced employment opportunities with earnings estimated to be reduced by between 15% and 28%. So deprivation puts the needs of children in jeopardy and thus creates barriers to education. Under a Conservative government, this city has seen some areas with nearly 70% of children living in poverty. Children need to be supported within their communities to then partake in an effective education system. So the national curriculum has a distinct lack of positive Black role models. It claims to teach on how people's lives have shaped this nation and how Britain has been influenced by the wider world. The image on the right-hand side of the screen is some of the only imagery that we were shown in an attempt of teaching Black history. So what are the effects of this? It shows our education system to be blind on different perspectives and shows a detrimental view of what it means to be British. With the traumatic images of slaves and white slave owners often packed onto ships, there was never images of Black pioneers or success. And it is true that you can't be what you can't see. We were not shown aspirational images that were reflective of us. When exchanging our experiences of the curriculum, despite being three years younger than me, Lisa and I were able to recall the same experiences. For example, doing a pros and cons exercise of the British Empire, finishing the lesson with the pros list longer than the cons, despite its abhorrent nature. Meaning we were taught of the empire as more of an example of trade rather than the trauma of our ancestors. And then moving to English literature, our classmates, often white, were encouraged in the context of plays or books to read our racial slayers when studying academic texts. As young Black girls, if we'd been completely dependent on our education system, we would have had the same knowledge about Black British historical figures at 18 years old than we would have at six years old. This needs to change. There is no excuse. And we are extremely passionate in the notion that Liverpool should take the lead on education reform and decolonising our curriculum.
So just to speak on Belvedere in the context of what happened, Belvedere is situated on Princess Park in Toxteth, in a now an academy, but it was previously a private school. On the 25th of May, George Floyd was murdered. His death triggered worldwide discussions and protests in relation to racism and police brutality. Consequently, many organisations took action or made statements on their commitment to anti-racism. Nearly two weeks later, on the 6th of June, Belvedere addressed Black Lives Matter publicly for the first time by sharing an article written by a white student on the concept of allyship to their Instagram page. As a result, there was a backlash of thousands of comments from the past and present students, many depicting negative experiences and many based upon microaggressions and subconspices that they experienced within schools. On the same day, Belvedere issued an apology and deactivated all of their social media accounts. In the following days, six students set up the Belvedere BAME Alumni Network private Facebook group to act as a safe space for BAME students to share their experiences. The Liverpool Echo published the article that you can see on the slide on the 8th of June, which gained even more attention to the situation. And from there, Belvedere began to react to the criticism by meeting with Kim Johnson MP, the Alumni Network and their internal the Alumni Network and their internal-led pupil equality and diversity team.
So some positive action. Since then, I've been part of an alumni network and I've strived for positive action that has been shared on a citywide level through a working group. On Friday the 30th of October, The Guardian described the hidden epidemic of racism in UK schools. I just want to make it clear that it has never been hidden to us. The time is now to support the current movement in education to achieve racial equality and equal opportunity. And this has been tried and tested. Within the last six months, Belvedere have implemented various examples of positive action in collaboration with the alumni and the pupil-led equality and diversity team, including policy change, extending to equal opportunities, behavioural management, equality and diversity, diversifying the teaching faculty, ensuring that current teachers undergo subconscious bias and microaggression training, strengthening the pupil voice within the school, celebrating black history with key influential figures, working with key local organisations that are passionate about race equality, setting links within the school and local community by establishing parent feedback groups, ensuring a dedicated pupil-led equality and diversity team sit within the school, shared a reading list by black and ethnic minority authors, saw the appointment of a black and ethnic minority-specific councillor and during the process of diversifying the curriculum to move away from a monocultural syllabus. Not only is it about changing the system, it's about changing the culture, making sure that black children are not treated as troublemakers or can get through a school day without someone petting our hair or experiencing racial abuse. All of the changes referenced above were enacted by current and former students in collaboration with the school. There is no reason as to why this could not become a citywide initiative. And now I'll hand over to Lisa to talk about her experience in the Equality and Diversity Team.
So the Equality and Diversity Team at Belvedere was introduced in September 2019 to establish a formal group of students responsible for promoting contemporary issues of equality and diversity within the school. There was a focus on delivering assemblies to other students and staff and fundraising. Members of the team were all sixth form students and were selected by the sixth form team staff. The team was successful in holding various charity events during Pride Month and Black History Month, engaging staff and students in celebrating different minority groups in a way Belvedere had not seen before.
As quickly as you can please, as quickly as you can, we're going to show a long time for this one. Keep going Lisa, yeah?
Yeah. However, internally, there were a number of issues regarding the priorities of the team members and the priorities of the staff. The team continues to support the school in striving for a community that encourages equality and diversity. As Rinabokova, former Director General of UNESCO, said, 'There are no immovable barriers to education.' Thank you all for listening.
Very good. Okay, thank you very much. As I said at the start, there is a reason why I'm not having questions. I posted, it was fantastic, and I would like that presentation sent over, though is it possible? The reason, actually, should have turned to Tom to have maybe come coffee. When that was on, the reason is that there's a potential clash with his scrutiny panel. Okay, but I thought that was brilliant. Certainly no questions for you for that reason. So I'll take questions for Tracy generally instead then please. Anybody got any questions for Tracy? Joanne, you're first, we can see.
Thanks Tracy and thanks for the presentation about Belvedere. That was really informative. Thank you so much for that. Tracy, just a couple of questions in terms of how long your secondment will be. You know, I know that you've said the report's to be published around March and April and I wanted to know two things really. What recommendations you might have or if you've got an idea of what you want this committee to do and take in forwards? You know, some of the actions that you're for, some of the findings that you're gathering already. And what recommendations can you think for some sustainable action in this area for Liverpool City Council? Because it's just a, you know, one year's secondment as far as I'm aware. In terms of your thing John about whether there's a conflict of interest, we're not covering the curriculum at all in what we're doing in the task force and we're talking, because Amina's on both groups, so we haven't got an issue. We're talking all the time about what we're both covering.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah, thanks Joanne. I'm trying to cover all your points. So in terms of the reporting streams and the way we're reporting, I'm reporting into Cadmus tomorrow and so I'm actually attending cabinet meeting tomorrow to give a presentation. There will be, a discussion will be had around the length of the secondment. So initially, the secondment, we've told it was 12 months, but recognise that there's a municipal, you know, break in the year as it is, so there's the elections etcetera. So I think that they will need to go back to council after the Mayoral elections to get the commitment to continue with the work of the task force. Just that, you know, that it was approved up to the end of the, you know, the year, the municipal year, isn't it? So it will have to go back to get formal approval to continue beyond May. And I've met with acting mayor who said that, you know, subject to all the processes etcetera, we'd look to do that and certainly the mayor's office was very supportive, the acting mayor's office was very supportive of the work of the task force. In terms of the recommendations, I guess the way they will come out, and we've still got to work on these, is that we want to get out the quick wins. So, you know, what can be done, what can be done really quickly? But I mean, I'm really upset, I guess, that we've had to delay some of the work because it is holding us back in terms of dealing with education before we move on to employment skills. However, what we've agreed is that those quick win recommendations, we will get them out as soon as we can and that the medium and the longer term recommendations, you know, that will come in. And I guess the big issue that you just mentioned there, which is about the sustainability of the work, it's really important that the recommendations that we make actually build in the sustainability. So how will it be sustained beyond the work of the task force, beyond the work of the 12 months? So that will all be built in within the recommendations as we bring them forward. For me, Joanne, I think the success of the work of the task force has got to be that the recommendations are embedded within whatever sector it is, corporate plans. And so that it's in the corporate plan, it's monitored, there's key minds and people sign up to it, you know? And so that the open and transparency in terms of that ongoing monitoring, people can be held accountable, organisations can be held accountable of what they've agreed to take forward, what they've agreed to embed and then need to agree to publish progress on a regular basis. So I think the sustainability is critical to the success of the task force and if we don't get that, yeah, we will probably fail.
Thank you. Lindsay, you're next please.
Yeah, I first just wanted to say that Jasmine and Lisa's presentations are also really good. I was also really pleased to see that there's been engagement with TUC and the teaching unions. I was just wondering as well if, I know you mentioned sad and disability. I was wondering if there's a focus on other intersectionality. So for example, women and girls and religion, because unconsciously people have different experiences and discrimination. So for example, Muslim girls, like where they're wearing a hijab, I can't pronounce it properly, a hijab or the headscarves, because obviously their experiences aren't a completely different type of, you say, people who aren't Muslim or Taboos because they're not being seen with it. And they can be like discriminated like in uniform policies or because people target them because it's visible.
Yeah, all of those things have come out in the discussion and the dialogues that we've had. And so in terms of the intersectionality, I think it's important that we do reference in the intersectionality because they're critical really, that, you know, in terms of discrimination, absolutely, there's, you know, discrimination. Jasmine and Lisa have just eloquently shown us the intersectionality in terms of poverty and poverty drivers here. But there are also, you know, issues around, you know, LGBTQ, you know, women, gender etcetera and faith and we will pick those up. And I guess what we've got to do though is just ensure the work, and we're trying to not duplicate work that's already going on, so we're well aware of the scrutiny panel that's set up to look at the admissions. And whilst we'll look at that and we'll touch on it, what we don't want to do is kind of cross over and get into that. But we've picked up admissions because people are mentioning it to us as well as a key issue. So that intersectionality will be, has been and will continue to be looked at and drawn out where it's appropriate to do so.
Okay, thanks Tracy. Anna, you're next.
Thank you, Joanne. Yes, first of all, massive thanks to Jasmine and Lisa, very eye-opening presentation. And I'm very glad you mentioned unconscious bias. And it's very encouraging that Belvedere are training their staff in that. And I just wanted to ask Tracy whether it's in your game to recommend that elected members of the council also undertake such training?
Training has come off as a key issue. And, you know, it's not been a formal recommendation, but it's certainly something that has come out and it will be a recommendation, which is that, and I know it's getting discussed within the city council as well, because I'm part of that, I attend the equality group, task group. But training is a key issue because what is happening, and it's not just within the education sector, it's quite across the board really, is that training is currently an online tick box exercise. It's completely inadequate and training needs to be not just for officers. Absolutely governance needs to be looked at too. So training is a key area, it needs work on and the working again with the combined authority, they're also looking at training and equality as training. And so this is where this kind of collaborative approach that is going on with the other boroughs and there's a piece of work looking at the quality of training, what works, what doesn't work. But that's a bit of a medium-term piece of work that is actually happening and that is being driven by all of the boroughs, including Liverpool as well. But yeah, training of governance as well as officers. But a change on quality and in.
Any more questions from members please? Any more? Okay, just a little bit for me to conclude. Don't get me wrong, I thought it was a fantastic presentation, but it's two years away from Belvedere. I also think it takes a lot about their school to put their issues so seriously. It would be very important for other schools to also take possibly more hidden problems more seriously. Going back to Tracy, I think it's really important that you had this opportunity to give us this interview report to us. This is something we shouldn't be burying under the carpet or hiding away. The issue of curriculum was an obvious one that you mentioned in that, but there's so many other issues as well. And I think it makes total sense to be allowed to continue and no sense whatsoever to be cut off halfway through what you're trying to do. I know in the interview I, Barbara myself, had with you, I could have talked for twice as long as we had a lot of time, but I'm sure you knew that. So once again, I think, oh, Tom, you've got something to say to us, yeah?
Yeah.
So to you.
Hello, I don't know if everyone can hear me.
Yeah.
Sorry, it's just you started that, John, by saying that it's good to hear that Belvedere have taken it seriously. And I just wanted to put that question to Jasmine and Lisa and say, are they satisfied as students and ex-students? And is the general feeling from ex-students and students that they are satisfied with Belvedere's response? I know you said we're not taking questions to them too, but I didn't really understand why. And it would be good to hear if they are satisfied with Belvedere's response to the issue.
Have the girls want to come back in? Young ladies want to come back in?
Jasmine, Lisa?
Jasmine, Lisa, yeah? Makes more sense for you to answer that, are you still there?
Oh, Lisa certainly left, anyone can see on the chat that she's left.
Okay, no problem.
I assume that they've left.
Right.
Because she couldn't ask her any questions.
No, but we have a solution, Tom. What you can do is invite them to your scrutiny panel. Yes?
I can say, I mean, it would be good to hear from their own words, but they have reported into the task force that they are happy with the work. I mean, there's still much to do, but they're happy that they are taking it seriously and that they've got a plan in the back and they're meeting quite regularly and they're reporting on progress. But you need to hear it from their mouths really.
Yeah. As I say, Tom will have the opportunity to be invited to get us to his scrutiny panel. Do you have anyone to say something as well?
The scrutiny panel is about admissions, it's not about the curriculum or racism in a particular school.
Right. I was only following my advice. Okay, which is basically a good reason that we make to listen to them today in that case. So that's fine. Anything else for Tracy? Sure, our thanks for what she's done so far and good luck for everything going forward. I think you might find the same kind of answers across the board. We'll have to wait and see. Because as we stand, the statistics don't actually lie, do they? Okay, so thanks again for that one. And now, Peter, we'll go into the move on to, is it item 10 next? Is it Cathy, item 10? So this, if I can find it, is going to be child criminal exploitation. And the adolescent team, we're going to receive another presentation in relation to child criminal exploitation and the operation of the adolescent team. We've got Sarah Hodgson and Cathy Griffiths from Children's Services, and they will have some questions.
Sure. One of my colleagues in the committee team will share the child exploitation presentation from RT Drive. It's in the committee folder for today's date.
That's a back as well? Well, we can see Sarah's there. Sarah's on. And we've got Cathy on. Right, okay.
Okay, so I'm just going to talk through some of the data and then I'm going to hand over to Cathy, who's going to talk over the practice developments. So on the first slide please. Over the last three years, we've seen pretty consistent levels of referrals to our front door for child exploitation. And we average around 470 per year. And within that, we see higher rates of child criminal exploitation over the last few years as this has become a more nationally recognised issue and is a very prevalent issue in the Merseyside region in particular, Liverpool. Next slide please. Next slide. Okay. So around half of the contacts that we get to the front door do come from our colleagues in police. And about two-thirds of those contacts that we get to the front door will result in a referral to children's statutory social care services. And that rate is actually higher than the rate that we get for all contacts, which is more around one in three. And four out of five of those referrals that we accept will progress to a multi-agency child exploitation plan. And around one in four of those referrals are a re-referral, which is in line with our overall re-referral rates and broadly similar to the national re-referral rate. Next slide please. So what we did prior to developing the service, which Cathy is going to talk to you about, is we really tried to get underneath those high-level statistics and really understand from all the data that we have at our fingertips as a partnership, more about these children and look at, what we actually did was produce a timeline through data by analysing data that we had from Merseyside Police, from our colleagues in education services and through children's social care data. And what we found was that within this cohort of children who are likely to become at risk of child exploitation in their adolescent years, they're three times more likely to be persistently absent from education than the pupil population. Persistent absence was a factor from primary school for these children, which was more prevalent than the pupil population, where persistent absence is more likely to become a factor at secondary school age. We found that often, within this particular cohort, these children had experienced school moves and a lot of these children had experienced at least two or more school moves at a primary school age. We found that later on in their trajectory, they were likely to be at high risk of permanent exclusion. But it was only after these being permanently excluded that we began to see arrests, not before the permanent exclusion. So we know that that permanent exclusion increases the risk. So we know that that permanent exclusion increases the risk for these children. We found that these children were twice as likely to be diagnosed with special educational needs than the total pupil population. And we found that they were likely to have experienced separation or loss through either bereavement of a close family member, divorce or separation of parents, and/or some of these children had a parent in custody. And touching on Melissa's presentation before, around child adverse experiences, we found that they were often living in households where there is known risks of domestic abuse, neglect or other forms of abuse, including sexual and physical abuse. So I'm going to hand over to Cathy, who's going to talk through how that informed the development of the adolescent service.
Okay, so just to go through first, some of the recent practice developments in Merseyside, including, in Liverpool, including the adolescent team. So across Merseyside, there's a Pan Merseyside Child Exploitation Group, which has developed procedures and processes around assessing young people, information sharing and joint working. That has just relaunched. Those procedures have just been relaunched and there's a new child exploitation assessment that will be undertaken with all young people at risk of child exploitation, that is criminal and sexual exploitation. In terms of Liverpool specifically, we've got a child exploitation response meeting, we call it the SAME meeting. That is a twice weekly meeting. Any referrals that come through the front door where young people are said to be at risk of exploitation are discussed in that meeting. And so that meeting, social workers attend that meeting, but we have the police at that meeting as well, so we can get police information at an early point at that meeting to inform the plan that we're putting in place. We've got individual MACE meetings chaired by independent reviewing officers. So the independent reviewing officers who chair the child protection meetings are also chairing all the meetings on young people who are coming through to us, who are at risk of CA and CSE. That is to give some independent oversight to the work that's going on with those young people. Their risk is regularly reviewed in multi-agency meetings. We've revised terms, the terms of reference for a multi-agency operational meeting. That meeting sits above the SAME and it happens once a month. And what is going to happen in that meeting is that we will focus on young people who have got, who need additional services. So if the independent reviewing officer chairs a meeting and thinks that, you know, health are not doing their part with this young person, education are not doing their part, children's services are not doing their part, it will be escalated up to that meeting to take out any blockages and get services in place. As a result of one of the posts that we've got on the adolescent team, which I'll talk about later, we're also going to be able to look at groups, hotspots, themes and perpetrators. So that's the meeting where all of that information will be brought together. Sarah led on an audit of the CE work that we've been doing in Liverpool. And as a result of that, we're in the process of developing a multi-agency child exploitation action plan. That will just be an action plan that children's social care will be, you know, doing bits of. Every agency has got, will have actions on that plan. So it's gone out to the police, health, voluntary sector, who are all developing their actions as a result of the findings of the audit. And the other practice development was the establishment of the adolescent team. Can we go on to the next slide, please? So in response to the issues that Sarah outlined in Liverpool and a growing body of research really across the country into effective work with adolescents, the adolescent team was established in Liverpool, in children's services. The team's funded by Liverpool City Council in 2021, the Merseyside Violence Reduction Partnership and the Families Programme. So the team was established in October and started to take referrals in October. The team takes referrals directly from careline for young people who are at risk of or who are being exploited. And they work with the young people and their parents, carers. The team will have smaller caseloads, will do some intensive work with young people and their parents and carers, and will work in a, it's a relationship-based contextual safeguarding. So contextual safeguarding is when you take into account the factors outside of the family home that are impacting on that young person. So for teenagers, it's often their peers, other adults that they meet, you know, and adults who've got no relation to the family. So it's not just issues within the family, although often they've got issues within the family as well. Can we have the next slide, please? So as I think you just mentioned, it's a single consistent worker for each young person with a reduction in the number of professionals involved with the young person and their family. So the social worker and the targeted services officer from this team will be expected to work with the family and not refer them out into all kinds of different services if they can do the work with them. And the model of working is relationship-based, trauma-informed practice. And assessments are undertaken and will be based on a contextual safeguarding model. The single assessment that all social workers are using in Liverpool has been amended to include some contextual safeguarding questions, and that's what they'll be doing. We're currently working with 94 young people and their families. And the main aim of the team really is to support young people and their families to prevent them being taken into local authority care. There's never good outcomes when you take a teenager into care. They just want to be in Liverpool, so they frequently go missing and their behaviour starts to escalate because they're running away, they're going missing, they get moved from care home because the care home they're in can't cope with all of that. So we're trying to keep young people at home as much as possible, to put as much support in place for their families. Because families often don't understand CA and the nature of CA, how it's impacting upon their young person, and sometimes can feel a little bit helpless about what they can do. So the team consists of a manager, two deputy managers, social workers, targeted services officers, youth workers and an analyst. The analyst is funded by the Violence Reduction Programme. And they have been able to use information from the Liverpool City Council and Merseyside Police. So she's developing for us targeted subject profiles, problem profiles for areas, geographical profiles such as hotspot mapping, perpetrators' timelines and associations, because we need more information about the perpetrators and how they link and how they are linked to several of our young people, not just one. There's also a CAMHS team that works across youth offending and the adolescent team. And they're developing enhanced case management with the teams. So what enhanced case management is, is basically a relationship-based way of working with young people that recognises that young people, a young person might not be able to undertake the work you think they should be undertaking because there's some other work you need to do with them to get them to the point where they can do, you know, keeping myself safe or some of the other work that we do. And the psychologists really guide the staff in putting together a plan of work for those young people. They've done lots of training with the staff, they give us some case consultation and they do clinical supervision with the staff as well. Performance measures for the team, or a reduction in adolescent care entry, reduction in missing episodes, because there's often a correlation between missing and CA, a reduction in offending amongst that group of young people, reduction in need and improved school attendance. So I think I've whizzed through there, but I'm happy to take any questions if anybody's got any.
Thank you, Cathy. I think that was, again, really good. Obviously a really positive, good news story, in that you managed to keep all these teenagers out of care. What I found interesting myself, there was a half of the referrals were coming from the police. When you've got all these early warning signs about exclusions and, you know, people off school at primary level and so on, maybe you could do your work on that. And linking in on one of the previous ones, if we had the money, I suppose, we could do some things about the north too, so experiencing all the life impacting trauma in the previous items. Anyway, we've got a few people here who want to make some comments. Lindsay, you're the first one at the spot, let me hand her. Lindsay?
Yeah, so just firstly to clarify my understanding and for obviously the committees to understand, is MACE similar to MASH or is it something like entirely separate or is that like an old term?
It's separate. MASH is the multi-agency safeguarding hub that gathers information on the referrals and then gives multi-agency information to social workers. MACE is the multi-agency child exploitation meetings. So the MACE meetings just specifically discuss young people who are at risk of CA and, you know, the plans that are in place for those young people and the wider work that needs to be done with the partners around those young people and the perpetrators.
So it could often be like a case of divide more than one, so they've added MASH and a MACE or it'd be like a triage to one?
Normally, the referrals we get have normally been through MASH, so we get a lot of information from MASH to help with our assessment of the young people.
So all child exploitation referrals go through MASH when they first come in? And then they're passed over to the expert child exploitation meeting, which has, for example, the child exploitation police there. So it's more of an expert group. And they do the risk assessments and they continue to risk assess as the child on that multi-agency plan.
And so within this as well, is it tend to be more like the criminal exploitation or sexual exploitation rather than like the modern slavery side of things or is it sometimes a bit of both?
Sometimes, well, it can be both. We get more referrals for criminal exploitation now than sexual exploitation. But we have got young people who've been referred under the modern slavery legislation, call them NRM referrals. So we've got young people who've had successful NRM referrals as a result of being exploited into offending. So it's a bit of both, really.
And I noticed as well that it mentions about like, one of the factors, obviously a lot of them are really common ones that you'd expect to see, like about being vulnerable, having obviously family abuse, stuff like that. But there was something that mentions about where they've had two or more primary school moves. So like, do we know like the underlying reason for that? Is it to do with things like whether it's been domestic violence or if it's to do with the family having to move home? Like, is there any data like on the housing types? Like, is it that they're in the private rented sector or is that not a factor? I don't know, I'm just thinking, could it be involved in it? Because obviously when people are in the private rented sector, they get moved on a lot.
Yeah, it's often linked to families moving about at that young age. So we know that when children experience lots of transitions and they don't experience a settled childhood, this can all manifest and lead to them being more vulnerable to exploitation in their adolescent years. And I guess it was important for us to be able to evidence that whilst that's sort of been known through and researched nationally, it is prevalent here in Liverpool too. And as John picked up, we need to be recognising these risk factors at an earlier stage and getting better at putting those earlier interventions in place to try and prevent those later escalation of risks. And, you know, the police having to make contacts in the front door because children have been, you know, picked up, arrested in possession of, you know, drugs and money and they're being exploited sexually as well. So that was the thinking behind looking at that data.
I'm sorry, another question off the back of that. So obviously because, obviously it does affect it and it's about, obviously where they've come from somewhere else, is there any difference between when someone's moved to somewhere nearby or when someone's moved like from another local authority?
We didn't pick that up in this particular data analysis, but we do know that families often move boundaries and they do cross boundaries, particularly Nosley and Sefton and Liverpool. So you see that Cathy in your, in practice, don't you?
Yeah, I mean, we've got a family that we're working with, the woman who started off in Sefton, went to Nosley, went to Holton, went back to Sefton, have come to us. So it's that kind of thing that's happening.
Because my thinking is that if they're not, if they're not like in one place, they're moving to places that they're not familiar with, they've got obviously the stress of movement, they're not attached to their friends, they're probably lonely. And those kinds of things all make them more vulnerable, don't they?
Yeah, yeah.
It was a really good presentation, by the way. I've just got all the hard questions.
Fine, thanks.
Thanks, Lindsay. Now, obviously all the figures are individual, address childhood experiences because that's when you're friends each time and they've done that and have to start over again somewhere else. I can see Joanne has her hand up again. Joanne, you please.
Thanks for the presentation, it was really good, really informative. I just wondered if anything come up on a sort of ward-based level, whether there was any particular, you know, particular patterns of exploitation that were going on in particular wards and how perhaps in the future, that information could come back to us as councillors so we could be informed and sort of work with not only community groups, but just be aware of some of the issues that are going on because we might have ways of helping form part of the solution.
So we know that children who are exploited, there's a higher prevalence of children in the North Liverpool wards. But with respect to where exploitation is taking place, that's what we've got the CE analyst in post and that's part of the work that she's currently undertaking. So we will be able to feed some of that in.
Okay, thank you, Joanne. Thanks Cathy and Sarah. Any more questions from members on this topic? No, okay, that's fine, we need to make some more progress. So once again, thank you, Sarah and Cathy, really interesting. As I said, really positive news as well, we're managing to, at least in this particular cohort, keep those good actual figures down a bit, that's the word we could team there. So now then, we are, thanks again, we are on to item number seven, six, okay, item number six. The impact of COVID-19 on education and children's services. Steve, he's going to do this for us, outlining the headline issues and the impact of the latest COVID-19 guidance in place in education and children's services. And some questions for him. Okay, Steve, it's you.
Thanks, Chair. I'll be trying to be really quick and brief because of conscious time, but there's a few things that members of the committee might appreciate a bit of an update on. And obviously appreciate the COVID situation and the impact moving quite quickly. So I've just got a verbal update on a few issues. So first looking at education then, so attendance at the minute. The current level of attendance for schools in Liverpool is 13.7%. Naturally, that's 13.9%. In terms of our breaking it down by sector, primary is 21%, secondary is 3.9%, specialist is 31.4%. There are a couple of schools, a handful of schools at primary level that are around about the 40% attendance level. And myself and Jonathan Jones, the Director of Education, is on the call, have been meeting with our union colleagues weekly to look at a range of issues around COVID in education and latterly, talking about how we can support those schools with the higher attendance. Quickly and just to confirm, obviously, you know, it's positive that half-term schools will be having half-term, given how hard everyone who works in school in whatever role has been working all this year, it's important that the half-term happens. We are doing some survey with our early years providers to find out if there's any provision available because obviously key worker and vulnerable children might need some provision. So we'll be able to feed back on that as soon as possible. In terms of COVID, just looking at the last seven days, in primary, we've had 43 cases, secondary seven and special nine. In terms of looking at since the start of the term, 59% of schools have had at least one case of COVID. And so in terms of isolation then, the numbers are 876 pupils and 236 staff currently isolating now. In terms of testing, some secondary schools have rolled out lateral flow testing, about eight or nine are doing it themselves. We've developed an offer by the council to do testing to support schools, which they buy into, and some of that is starting in a few of our secondary schools this week and hope to roll that out to many more secondary schools. Primary schools have been sent home testing kits for their staff and as have some of our special schools. Another issue for people will be interested in is home learning and support for that. So. So we've been doing some work on on digital devices. Obviously, the Department for Education have supplied close to 8,000 devices over since September. Additionally, we've had nearly 500 routers that have been supplied to 30 primary schools. Schools have been doing a lot of work themselves on on supporting the home learning, obviously, and supplying more devices. Just so you're aware of the sorts of figures, did a survey of 118 schools. 118 responded out of 161 schools. Six, that just six, almost six and a half thousand children don't have any access to digital devices at home. So access from our education. 3,200 do not have access to the internet connection. And 1,400 children were currently attending school as a vulnerable child under the broader definition because they had difficulty engaging in remote education. So one of our colleagues from School Improvement is coordinating, working with with schools to share really good practice on home learning as much as we can and all the national guidance. Also working with the Chamber of Commerce on an initiative to try and get donations of devices and dongles and other support to schools as well. And I know that a lot of, you know, ward councillors and members of this committee and other charitable organisations are doing really good work trying to support home learning and trying to support devices as well. Briefly, on on things like free school meal vouchers, the council has got about 80 plus schools now signed up to the free school meal voucher system, which we're we're rolling out supporting schools on. I won't cover inspection and examinations because they are in Barbara Councillor Murray's briefing. Just mentioned something on some of the other areas of children's services. You've seen through some of the other reports around mental health and and also the the social care demand report. You can see the trends there. But what I would feedback, and I know Fiona Waddington is on the call with us, is that different to maybe previous lockdowns, we are starting to see more of an impact on staffing capacity, particularly in social care. We're also seeing things like the slowdown in activity around court. So in terms of exiting some of our young people from care and the court processes are slowed down significantly. There is obviously still lots of necessary face-to-face work and visits going on across social care, early help, youth justice as well. Our children's centres, early help and family support services are still open. Obviously, we have risk assessments in there and they are COVID safe. We've done some work recently with our union colleagues about our policy on face-to-face work, just to just to clarify that. And the final thing, just to finish on a positive, the National NSPCC Awards happened last week. And the council had one of our teams and some individuals recognised for the work they're doing on what's called the graded care profile, which you may recall is about how we assess and support neglecting families. Thank you, Chair. Happy to take any questions.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. First of all, our thanks as a committee to everybody involved in keeping the schools going, the teachers going in, they know the support staff, et cetera, I think I need saying again. I think Anna was the first one to come up with a question on this one. And then Anna, over to you again.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so I've got a question around the children who are currently attending schools. So I wanted to know what we're doing as a local authority to encourage sort of higher attendance amongst children that are really needed for safeguarding purposes amongst children from very vulnerable families. And my second question is about the criteria of the key worker children who can attend. Because my understanding is that it varies from school to school. Some schools offer full-time places, some offer part-time places. In some schools, both parents need to be a key worker, in in other schools, just one. Sometimes it is key workers that actually have to physically go to work and live in a place. So why do we have such variety of of different options? And is it is it down to each individual school, the diомin who attends? Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Yeah, I mean, it's a really important issue that we've been talking to lots of people about. So what we've said from the start of this this latest period of lockdown is that there's a national guidance on exactly what a key worker and vulnerable vulnerable child is. And we've been really clear that we need to stick to the national guidance. But we've also been clear that individual schools have to do their risk assessments and make sure they can operate safely for their kids and also the staff there. So what we've found, again, as I was saying before, although over across the city, it's 13.7% attendance. Primary's 21%, secondary 3.9%, special 31.4%. In some schools, it's 40% and a couple of those are over 40%. And I think the the head teachers and the teaching staff in those schools have done an assessment in terms of making sure they can actually operate safely. So that has impacted in some areas where there are very high levels of vulnerable and key worker children, where they're only able to offer partial and in some cases have had to restrict their definition even further. And what I said and what Jonathan has said, our Director of Education, is that you know, we understand, you know, the frustration of some of our parents, but we have to support our head teachers in doing that assessment. What we are going to do this week is is talk to some of those schools with the highest levels of attendance, you know, 40% plus, and see what what there is we can do. You know, potentially working with other schools in the area to see how we could support those key worker and and vulnerable children. I think if I could just ask Fiona, I know you're on with us, in terms of vulnerable children, particularly as Anna's flagged up, the safeguarding risks. We've got the figures on the percentage of vulnerable kids who are attending. What what can we say about how we are working with families where they're not attending, Fiona?
Yeah, firstly, I'd like to say that there are more vulnerable children attending school now in this lockdown than in previous lockdowns, I have to say. So today's figures show that we've got 45% of our vulnerable children actually going into school. And they're mainly our vulnerable children who are from child protection families, basically, and some of our more vulnerable children in care as well. Social workers have got, are expected through national guidance, but also from ourselves to encourage our parents of those vulnerable children to get them into school. Because obviously, if they're on child protection plans, it might be safer for them to be in school than actually be at home. So social workers are encouraging children, families to get their children into school. And that seems to be happening this time much more than it did previously. So we just continue to do that.
Thank you. Lindsay, I think you're next with that question.
Yeah, so I've got two actually, on the back of Anna's question. I was going to pick this up from Barbara Murray's report, actually. So obviously about like some of the schools are reporting surprising high attendance. Obviously, has this been different to the previous lockdowns? I know that this time around, there's more people having to attend workplaces. So for example, likes of coffee shops because they're still open or more people are going back into their offices and they don't need to because they can work from home. So are we looking into the underlying causes of why there's more attendance? And how we can support that side of it?
Well, I think that, you know, that again, that's a really good point. And myself and Matt Ashton, the Director of Public Health, have written out to parents, basically reiterating the government guidance, which is if you can stay home and if, but if you do meet this criteria and, you know, you do need a school place, then then access education. But obviously, given the announcement that schools might not even start back until the 8th of March, which does feel a long way away right now, doesn't it? We will be reissuing advice again to parents just to stress that point that really only have your child go to school if you really do need to, you know. Just being really, really straight with you about it, you know, there's some real concern being fed back from some staff and from union colleagues about the numbers in some schools. And and, you know, we have to, we have to respect that. And, you know, running alongside that, we are pushing and Barbara Murray and ourselves are pushing that anyone who does a role around schools should be prioritised for vaccination. And we'd also like to have, you know, as much testing and and other protective measures around schools as much as we can. I think linked back to the other earlier presentation, I feel more concerned now about the impact on children's mental, physical health than I do about the lost learning right now, to be honest.
Definitely, I think for the most of both, obviously, I can appreciate from your point that obviously you're just from the perspective of like children's services and a lot of this is like in the wider context. I did have another point as well. I know you mentioned about the home learning devices and internet access and where it work them at the Chamber of Commerce, local councillors and schools. So how can we coordinate the support, so like even as as like councillors feeding into it? So that we ensure that we're not duplicating and it gets to all of those who are in need of it?
I think the the two ways are obviously the connections world councillors have with their their schools in their area. And the schools will have done an assessment, as as we have through the survey, on the on the level of need and what the what the gap is, so what additional support that is. And I guess it's not only materials in terms of devices and dongles and all that. It's all the other materials that 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 young people can use to be supported at home. So your your individual wards. But then also, we've got, we've launched by the SAK, the Council Comms campaign and on Twitter with support from the chamber. And Paul Bradshaw from School Improvement Liverpool is coordinating those offers. So we can share with the committee the details after the meeting on how people can link into that as well.
Thank you, Lindsay. Thank you, Steve. On that one, have any many ward members have any services available in their male neighbourhood funds or the COVID specific funding? Maybe we can approach our local schools. Another one I am a governor on. They've given loads of laptops out, but they're still saying that they're still short. And that's not, that's where I live, that's not near the ward, you know, the ward I'm a councillor in. So they would have to approach their local councillors, obviously, which is what I advise them to do. But if anybody has some service money available, you know, trying to narrow that gap. Because it's a gap establishing between those who can do online learning and those who can't, they need to be solved with having the laptop or something similar. Okay, Liz, we've got a question from you.
Yeah, I'm just wondering whether, obviously, the the figures have come out that of children who develop COVID, around 13% of primary school children and 15% of secondary school children are developing long COVID. And I wondered whether there were any figures for Liverpool for how children and how many children have long COVID and how this is going to impact the plans for going back to school and making sure that 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 children are not as risk, as much at risk as they have been.
Steve?
Well, thanks, Liz. It's a really, really good question. Whilst I have from Melissa Campbell, who was with us earlier, I've got the figures and breakdown by age group, which I can circulate with the committee again when we're finished. The infection rates, we've got that broken down, but I haven't seen anything yet on the long COVID analysis. So I'll ask our public health colleagues if they've got that that data.
Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Liz. Thank you, Steve. I think there are no more questions. We are running very low on time. Can't see any more hands up. Oh, Linnie, is that yours? Do you have a question, Linnie? No? Okay, why then? Not sure what that sounds, never mind. Okay, so now we can go straight on to Barbara's report, Education, Employment and Skills Cabinet Member, I can say it's 12. Barbara, over to you.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, thanks, Barbara.
I'm not going to say anything. I'm assuming people have read the report. I'm happy to take questions. The only point I wanted to make, and Steve's already made it, is the recent announcement from government that schools will not open before March. And we are looking actually at the 8th of March as a potential start of reopening. But even that is not clear. So the difficulty really in all of this, even the writing of my report, is that things are changing on a daily basis. It's very difficult, but we are monitoring everything very closely. And I would just mention, we're looking closely at how we can support teachers' assessment for transitions from early years to reception from year six to seven and later on GCSEs, A-levels and move into universities and colleges. But really, I'll I'll just take questions to save time.
Okay, I'm prepared for Paul. Anna, we'll start with you, please.
Thank you. Just a couple of very quick questions. So first one, Steve already mentioned it about vaccinations. So I am very much of the opinion that teachers should be prioritised and I really would like either the council or this this committee to kind of take a stance about it and and write to relevant people and, you know, make make a lot of noise about it. Are we, what are we doing at the moment? What more can we do? And how can we still get involved as as the select committee? And then the second question, essays on climate emergency, the competition for essays on climate emergency. Can you share details with me, please, just so that I can promote it with local schools and other interested parties? Thank you.
Firstly, on the vaccinations, I think we have to say there are a lot of people who need to have the vaccination for frontline workers. But my understanding is Colin Semple of Liverpool University has advised there is actually an independent board looking at this to decide who gets it first. Obviously, some of that is to do with the age of people and the risks to their health. And then they'll move into the workforce. We will, because we are supporting educators, we will, whenever we can, campaign for this. We've been doing some on Twitter, but we will definitely push it through communications. Because it's fine for the Prime Minister to say schools are safe, but they will be even safer if we know that staff are safe when they attend school. And I think that's our position on this.
Barbara, just to clear you off there, Steve wants to say something.
Apologies, yeah, just I should have said in my summary before, we obviously, people understand it's a nationally driven, driven prioritisation process. But there has been some frustration because other areas have started doing some different things. But we have got some local flexibility. So in the last couple of weeks, health and social care staff who work for the council and providers are being vaccinated. And we also made the case with Barbara's support that staff who work in special schools, who do hands-on care roles, should also be vaccinated. So this week, they have they have started to be vaccinated as well. But yeah, absolutely support Anna's point. We should broaden vaccination for all school staff as soon as we can. Thanks.
And then on the second point, Anna, we're just working out the logistics of the essay. And I would really welcome you working closely with me on that. I attended a climate change conference, it was the best one ever in the city in December. And I'm hoping that we will follow on, the essay will follow on from that. So the key things, there were forests, oceans, I think recycling and smart cities. And I was thinking the essay competition could fall into that. The difficulty comes across age groups, how we do it. And so I'm talking to early years providers as well about how very young children can be involved in some way.
Thanks, Barbara. Do the members think it would help? We have, you know, a formal motion or something similar from the committee asking the government to prioritise school staff and, you know, care staff on this. Would that help or would that be a hint? Steve, what do you think?
Yeah, any support?
Yeah. Anna, you're happy with that, yes? Yeah, obviously asking around, Lizzie, would you support that or not? You would as well. Billy, would you support that? Yeah, so I think we are going to be unanimous on, we can personally, Peter, say that we we would, we would like if possible, school staff, teachers and, you know,
Cabinet members who write some improvement.
Yeah, so cabinet member can can you do vitally appropriate this? So there you go. Be given the wording as well, what can we want? So that sorts that one out and keeps Anna happy. Then we've got a question from Lindsay, I think was next.
Yeah, so it was just, obviously, within the report, it was mentioned about the impact of lockdown on on sending children's mental health. And we had the presentation earlier. And I was thinking about what about the impact as well about when the children have to attend schools once they're open? So obviously, everyone's mental health is impacted differently. And as we've seen, there's some children who, when they attend the school because of their health anxiety, it impacts on them in that way. As adults in many workplaces, for example, officers, our employers are required to follow government guidance and to ensure that any measures, including a return to the office, are assessed on an individual basis, given consideration to the Equality Act 2010, so as not to given consideration to the Equality Act 2010, so as not to discriminate. So, for example, in this case. Sorry, I was kicked out of the meeting.
No, you definitely beat the iron by the way.
I was in the middle of saying, so there's an individual assessment when you have to return to the office as an adult. So it has to be considered based on the Equality Act 2010, because otherwise it could unintentionally discriminate. So in some circumstances, if a child has long-term anxiety or special educational needs, they'd be classed as having a disability. So how can we ensure that we apply the same principles to our schoolchildren?
Most of the children we're talking about, Lindsay, would have an education and healthcare plan very similar and they will be individually. I would say most schools and most teachers know their individual pupils. And I think everyone will be in a heightened space when children return to school, as we were in September, looking out for indicators. They they are expert in knowing their children. What they're not expert in is the very developed, if you like, mental health issues. And at Liverpool Schools Forum, we discussed this only last week. So there will be a need to refer on to more capable mental health providers, if you like. We can't expect the teachers to deal with the issues they'll be facing, but they will identify and diagnose where they should sign those children on to.
Thank you. Thanks, Barbara. Our next question comes from Billy.
Yeah, John, thanks. My question actually is in for Barbara, John. I I'm just inquiring, have we skipped by item seven? Because I do have a question in relation to that.
We're on item seven.
Sorry?
We are on item seven.
All right, okay. I do have a question when when Barbara's finished.
Well, she's still answering the question now.
Well, yeah, my, well, the the question on item decision, on item seven, that relates to page fourteen of the war, of the of the report, where it refers to forty-three Timewall Hill and the 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 proposed children's home there. And the 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 section of the report starts with a very banal statement that a meeting of.
I think we're on the wrong page.
Yeah, that's 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 next one. You can note it, you've reached back for five minutes. Okay, next in a few minutes, Billy. Right, do you have any other questions as well?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Thanks, Barbara, for the report. I just noticed with schools still being open for vulnerable pupils and children of key workers, you'd said there's an average of around 14% attendance. How does that compare with the first lockdown we had last year? Thanks.
Dan, the lockdown last year, we approached totally differently. We didn't have all the schools open and we just had hubs. And so they were quite well attended on the whole. But this time around, I know we say schools are closed, schools are not closed, all schools are actually open. And so we have a situation where attendance varies from school to school. It depends on the proximity to, I suppose, key workers. And it could be, I suppose, around the hospitals and maybe more key workers living around the hospitals and those schools, the high numbers. And the difficulty I feel is to do with the original plan when we came back after Christmas was to rotate classes and age groups to ensure that we had only half of children in school at any given time, so we could socially distance. What we now have is a situation where in some schools, they're very close to that number and just with vulnerable and the children of key workers. And special schools in particular, because there is a tendency for there to be more vulnerable children in the special schools. And I was seeing very high attendance and the difficulty then is also about if they have staffing issues. So staff become ill or have to isolate. And the ratios are out of culture, if you like, because the ratios are obviously lower for pupils, which is that in special schools. So there's quite a lot of issues around attendance. But we are monitoring it very closely. And, you know, it's a strange thing. Currently, our attendance is higher than the national average and I never ever thought I would live to say those words. But it's not pushing in this instance. We need it to be further down.
Indeed, yeah. Okay, I don't think we have any more questions for Barbara. When you take those two reports together, the Covid update and Barbara's report, Linni would come a lot of good ground there. So thank you very much, Barbara, for that one. Linni, we're on to number eight now, so Billy's on standby. Do you want to use the same method, just take questions or do you want to talk to us? Oh, yeah, I'm a submit. We can take eight and eleven about the children's social care performance assembly together, Linni.
John, I will be clear and thanks for giving me the graveyard shift because most people have gone. And it's really difficult when you start to a long meeting for people to try and talk to. But obviously, I'm not going to talk to all of it on the report and I have made notes. I'm going to address your thing, Billy, so I might cut you off at the pass, hopefully. And I will talk about that. But what I want to talk about is the actual priorities. I think at my first elect committee, I said, you know, I want to take time to think about the priorities I wanted. And listening to Jasmine and Lisa tonight, who absolutely blew me away, I have to say, young people generally do. One of my priorities about giving more more young people a voice in this city is really important. And when you listen to Lisa and Jasmine tonight, to me, that evidence is everything why it's important. And when I met with the Children's Care Council and I plan to meet them again, they probably made me think this is why I do what I do, if I'm honest. Because listening to them and participation from our young people and them giving us ideas, quite often for me, the best ideas come from young people more than adults or politicians or officers, if I'm honest, in terms of what we get back from our young people. And so that is obviously one of my priorities. Obviously, Melissa's talked a lot tonight about mental health and improving our general health and wellbeing of our young people. That's massively important to me. But not only the focus on mental health, if you think anyone who attends a council last week and the fantastic speeches that were given to around the right to food and everyone supports that. For me, the right to good food for our children, young people, is massively important and that children have right to nutritious foods in this city. So that's something I'll be looking at. And in relation to their mental health, obviously, I'm here to be scrutinised, so it's not good for me to ask questions to Melissa. But one of the things which I am looking, will want to look at is around what the work we do with our targeted services and then young people and how mental health and those young people who are engaging in substance misuse and the effect that cannabis use has on our young people and the knock-on effects and things like that. And obviously, I spoke briefly before around the corporate parenting board. I think it's really important that people get on board with it and we understand our role. It's massively important. I know I spoke to Fiona around putting together some sort of online training or information that all councillors, certainly, I'm going to take that to the Labour Group, etc., I would hope that be open to all councillors right across the council to actually access. Just so people understand our responsibility, it's not just as elected members, but our responsibility as the council and what we can do in our role to actually give better opportunities to all looked-after children. And I'm not going to talk around everything on the report. And Steve did mention the awards that were awarded last week. And I've been following the officers' names down because I think it is something that we need to shout about. Seven out of the sixteen national awards, the awards are to staff and partners, mostly our staff, but obviously because of the health issue there. And it was the first time the NSPCC had awarded a team award. There's never been awards and Angela Nundy's entire team were awarded. So I think it's massive in terms of recognition. You know, we are in really, really difficult times. Our staff are against it. You know, they're dealing with their own worries and concerns, but they're actually there doing what they can. And that too, in terms of protecting and assessing, you know, children, young people, sort of neglect is essential. So to be recognised in that way is a massive achievement. So I want to put on record in terms of my congratulations as a cabinet member, but I think as a committee, we need to. I'm not going to speak about anything in the report, even though I made lots of notes, except I will speak, because I know Billy wants to talk to me about it, not me particularly, but around our commitment to children's homes. Our commitment to children's home has to be, you know, it's something that, you know, we are going to be pushing on with. Bringing our children's homes in-house is massively important, so that we can keep our looked-after children near to home, cost effectiveness and all the reasons. And obviously, the journey is in the report, but I've spoken to the cabinet member, the previous cabinet member today, around it. And there's been a lot of reflection and Billy, we acknowledge, and I know Barry has apologised to the residents in terms of the lack of consultation with the board councillors. You know, I've made a firm commitment that that won't happen again when we look anywhere else. But Barry has acknowledged that that was a cabinet member's decision and not an officer's decision in terms of pushing that through. When I spoke to him about it today, he said it was a judgment call in terms of he didn't want to lose the chance of maybe the property that had been identified. It was a wrong judgment call and we apologise to the councillors that you broke. It won't happen again. And any properties that we look for in the future, one of the first things that we do will go out and we will consult with the board councillors. And, you know, it's it's been a long process. And I I met with your residents in in December myself and I listened and I understand, but where where do we put our children? If a family moved into the house with fifty, ten kids, you know, it could be a family, it could be a HMO. You know, there'll be lots of protection there for for the residents. I understand their concerns, but we do need to get our children here and we need to bring them. And we are going to stick to our commitment to children's homes in the city. And I'm not sure what else I can say to you, Billy, but that is, you know, that's how it is. It wasn't an officer's decision. It was taken by the previous cabinet member. I spoke to him today and I think, you know, I'm just being honest with you.
Right, thanks, Lily. I don't think there are any other questions. Billy, I think your question has been answered. I really do think your question has been answered in an open and honest way. Personally, I always think it's better it's better to talk.
Get on mute, Billy.
Go on, Billy.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Look, Linni, thank you ever so much for that. And of course, your apologies are accepted. But I don't think the committee here is in any way aware of the level of of public uproar that this children's home has created. And it's not just about the lack of consultation. And I accept your comments with regards to that and your apologies. It's gone way beyond that now. It's an absolute listening of poor management, bad handling, right, right from the very start. It also includes poor administration and bad decision-making by the planning department, which we don't need to discuss here. The very latest of that is that the project manager and intended manager of the home has submitted in a planning application that this home is to be a C2A. Now, the implications of C2A are way beyond the implications of C2, which.
Right, okay, Billy, I want to close you down now.
Let's get away from that because that.
Billy, you've had an apology. You've had an apology.
Question is to Steve Reddy. And the question to Steve Reddy is, why is it that although he was asked both in private meetings and in public forums, who was responsible for the purchase of forty-three Timewall? He did not declare until only the other day that it was indeed him and and his colleagues.
Now, I'm really not happy with the direction there. You've had an answer, Billy. That should be enough.
Can I answer that question?
Yeah, go on, Linni, yeah.
Sorry, Billy, I want to answer that question because I don't think it's fair to officers in this respect. The purchase of land ultimately comes down to property asset management. They they saw the land, they, you know, check it out, they actually, and I know, and I've seen, I've seen a whole email thread, so I know what you're talking about. And I know in terms of the human error that's been made in terms of the classification of one and, you know, staff are under immense pressure and we should allow the human error. That was an administrative mistake. So I take on board what you're saying, but I think it's really, really unfair. You know, we've we've acknowledged, we won't do it again this next time. It will be done in more improved and we will consult. But I don't think there's anything more to be said about that. And I don't think it's justifiable holding officers to account in this way.
But I want to that one down. That's enough. I'm going on to Joanne, please. Another question from Joanne.
You know any involvement?
Go on to Joanne, please.
So I just wanted to thank you for your report, Linni, and your priorities that you've identified. And I just wanted to pick up on an important point around listening and young people having a voice. And it's been my experience that institutions are very good at listening and not acting on what is being said. And I think the topic of what the two young girls were talking about tonight, I think we need to take that on board as a priority. And if we're going to listen to people's voices, that we act on what we're being told. I do find it quite difficult as a new councillor to be involved in lots of discussions that don't lead to outcomes. And I would really like to see some effective change as a result of some of the people we listen to implemented in our future planning.
Yeah, totally agree with that. Okay, I don't think we have any more questions for Linni. I I think the committee can also add very congratulations for that team who won all those awards as well, Peter. No, no more questions. Right, I said eleven. And that's the, any any updates on that, please, with the, yeah? This is going to be Linni and one of the officers. The social care update. Any information you have to add to it?
I think it's been covered.
It's been covered, totally. Okay, so we've got seven done, we've got eight done, we've got nine done. We're on now to the scheme of delegation. Yeah, scheme of delegation, item number twelve, thirty-seven to forty-three, supplementary agenda, recording of decisions made. And I think we've got a question on this one as well. So I can't read it unfortunately, that that block on it on the screen. Right, any questions on the scheme of delegation? Yeah, Lindsay, that's who it was.
Yeah, I'm not sure if Dan's got a question or if he's just not lowered his hand.
No, that's not showing anything. Well, I can see it's you.
No, I can see it as well. Yeah, so, I mean, I might be wrong on this, but it's just what it looks like. So so on the scheme of delegation with the Blueberry Park expansion, it says that KIA have provided a potential cost range for the project. And it says of like five hundred and sixty-three thousand three fifty to six hundred and twenty-two thousand six fifty. So like, from the outside of not knowing how much these things cost, it looks really expensive. Is this like a typical custom for this, these type of works and have we obtained any other quotations for it?
Right, Steve can answer that one.
I can get your written response from the Property Services, but there's a framework and KIA are here we go through to access that framework for that work. Yeah, so but I'll get I'll get you the detail on how that process works.
Okay, happy with that, Lindsay?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else have a question on the scheme of delegation? No, we're all happy. Questions?
Chair, you have two questions which have been received. One from King Johnson MP relating to a number of issues, which does actually include an update on our racing diversity exclusivity model, which members may wish to doubt. And the second question from Amira Akhtar, two cabinet member on the Bain Bay town of teaching staff. Chair, the questions have been included on the supplementary agenda.
Right, are we happy with that? The questions are all included. The answers will be forthcoming, yeah? The answers are worth it for that. Everybody happy with that, yeah? Joanne, are you happy with that one?
Sorry.
Are you happy to answer those questions? So they all used.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Sorry to speak again. I think one of the reasons why Amina will have been raising the question is that there was a high proportion of teaching staff recorded or staff in schools. I think it's important, I can't remember, I can't, I haven't got the papers in front of me, but I think it's twenty-two black teachers. And I was, the whole number of teachers within the schools now strikes me that there's a high proportion of teaching assistants. I don't know much about the role. I know it takes a long time whether people go on to become a teaching assistant, sorry, a teacher, become a teaching assistant. But it strikes me that what we've been talking about for a long time, this provides a perfect opportunity to try and put something in place that we encourage teaching students to become teachers, so we increase the number of black teachers within schools.
Clearly, you need to do something. Barbara, let you answer.
I think the response shows, Joanne, the numbers of teaching assistants separately, and I think the number is a hundred and fifty-seven. Amina's question was about the breakdown of the teachers. We don't have a breakdown according to ethnicity. I don't make these figures up. These are the figures the Department of Education holds, and these are the figures we've had reported to us. So the numbers are what they are, but they do not include any British staff in the ethnic minority grouping.
So, sorry, Barbara, that point is irrelevant to what I was saying. The reason why I thought Amina was asking for the numbers is so we had a clear indication of what the numbers show in terms of black teachers, not black staff in schools. So I don't know what your point is that you were trying to say about Department of Education in terms of figures. We know there's a really low number of black teachers in school. I've lived in this city for fifty years, I know that. People tell me about it all the time. So my point is, my point is on this, is what can we do with the fact that we've got such a high proportion of black teaching assistants? What can we do to increase that number of black teachers as a local authority? And we've been talking now for over a year around racism and improving the impact of racism in schools with children. You know, we never stop talking about it, but I'd like to see something productive come out of something that shows a clear statistic that there are far too few black teachers in our city.
Joanne, my point was, the number of teaching assistants isn't that high compared to the number of teachers. We don't know the breakdown. So I would have thought part of the work of the task force would be to look more closely at the local breakdown. There is not anything to suggest what you've just said.
I'm sorry, you've just, you've just got twenty-two black teachers and a hundred and fifty-seven black teaching assistants in figures that have been put in front of us? I think that shows that there's a small number of black teachers and a high proportion of black teaching assistants. I don't know, I don't understand this, Barbara.
At no point does the information refer to black teachers or teaching assistants. It refers to ethnic minority groups. We do not
Right, okay. We're going to go anyway. Barbara and Joanne, can you still hear me?
Yeah.
I think the issue here is the distinction between Bain and the black teachers. That is one of the problems, that the figures are Bain figures, so you've got Chinese and all sorts of others. But you're talking specifically about providing black role models to enable black, black boys and girls to be higher.
Black is, black is a term that we commonly use to say black and minority ethnic. I'm not talking about white Irish people, I'm talking about black Asians and all those groups. So we know there's no more than black, twenty-two Bain.
Right, we've That's what we're doing here. She's actually deep pull off now. Right, back and up. Right, we're back, we're back on, I don't even hear you now. We are back on. Did look like you had cut off and actually you weren't, that was an automated thing. I just, at the end of the meeting, I'd just like to thank you all for your contributions, for your questions. I think it's been a really good, positive meeting, and there's lots of good things we can move forward with there. And so thank you all for your attendance. Now I will officially close the meeting.